Okay, roll call. Counselor, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Susanna.
All counselors present, with the exception of Jan V. Hill, a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you so very much. Up next on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Counselor Grego.
Mayor, if there's no questions on the agenda, make the motion we approve the Agenda and excuse Counselor V. Hill.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll start voting. Okay, Ms. Susanna.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have Citizen Comment. This is the time where we will allow audience members who've turned in these cards to come up to the podium. We will have someone turn on one of the mics or a couple of the mics if we could, so that they can make their comments. We ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. If you're still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that particular time. Up first, we have Jess Hankings. Thank you, Heather.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your time. I am just into town for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, which is, a lot of people call the best-kept secret in the world. We've been around for 118 years, and our goal in life is to help other people. People helping people is our motto. We have functions, make money, give it to charity. We put over $25 million into the University of Iowa for diabetes, and we have a cure for diabetes on the books. We have had several U.S. Presidents. We were involved with Mother's Day and several other things in our government. We would like to come into your community, and a lot of money goes back to the community from the functions that we have. It's all with local people doing local things. We work well with other fraternal orders that are in the area. We work well with our law enforcement and fire. With our first year as a member is actually free for any of our military, law enforcement, fire, EMTs, people like that, that save our lives every day. I just wanted to come in here and just kind of give you a little bit of idea on what's going to happen. There will be announcements put in your paper and local radio stations as to when it's going to be starting to have an organizational meetings, and you'll be able to get a lot more information. I do have some pamphlets with me. If anybody would like some more information, I can leave it here and go from there. That's about all the time I'll take up tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Susanna, I assume this is the only card we have for tonight? Okay. Counsel, thank you. Up next, we have Consent Calendar A. Has everyone had an opportunity to review Consent Calendar A? Okay, Counsel Grego.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Susanna.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have regular business. We have presentations from outside agencies. The first agency is the SLV Tourism and SLV Museum Association Update. Please come up to the podium and give us your presentation. Appreciate it.
Okay, hi, my name is Kat O'Lance. I'm with the San Luis Valley Tourism Association and Museum Association as president of both. Yes, I am retired and crazy. So, the first was Museum Association. So, the top outer brochure that you have is just new, off the presses as of the end of June. That was first printed back in 2010, and it just flew off the shelves, and I think it's going to happen again. It gives you some really nice driving tours that takes in the whole valley and all the incredible history and beauty that we have here in the valley. And then I've included a tourism map as well. The two complement each other perfectly, so that if you're looking at the driving tour, pull out the bigger map and go, "Okay, cool," you know? But know that it's going to take more than one day. I think people need to realize how big the valley is, that when they're visiting. The other thing that Museums is doing is we're applying for a CTO, Colorado Tourism Office. It's called a Craft Tourism Workshop, and it's going to be all day. And the one we want, of course, is one that themes called Culture and Heritage. And what we're going to do, of course, is invite anybody and everybody in the valley that's interested. I don't care if you're with a specific heritage or history group, you know? If you just have an interest in that kind of environment, everyone will be invited, and it's free. So, Colorado Tourism. So, we should know probably in the next couple of weeks if we got that workshop agreed. And then that plays into the next item, which is our SLV HUG. It's History Undiscovered Group. And we had a first meeting back in April where, again, I invited anybody and everybody that is either involved with a history group, nonprofit, or even people who are just doing stuff on their own. So, we had about 25, 30 people that came, and the conversations, because a lot of these people, we made sure that they were sitting next to somebody they didn't know. It was so intense, it was awesome. I was afraid to interrupt them because they were having such great conversations and, "Oh, we can work with you on that and collaboration." So, that's what we want to continue building on to eventually host a history conference for Southern Colorado. And then recently, we just had the Friends of Engine 169, you know, right there, joined our group. They want to be with our group, and so we're getting more involved with them and help them promote the engine and the history of that particular train. We're waiting, crossing our fingers, to host a history conference here in the valley. It's called the Colorado Wyoming Association of Museums. When we went a couple of years ago, they were looking for another rural place in Colorado to host a conference. We were like, "We're it." They've never, since they were established in '73, have never held it here in the valley. So, I'm like, "Okay, guys, you got to do it here." So, again, we're hoping unofficially to know maybe within the next couple of weeks. So, again, I want the whole valley to get involved, you know? There'll be site visits, because you're going to have 200 or 300 people from Wyoming and Colorado. They're all history-related, coming to Alamosa. So, we're going to have buses, maybe, that can go out to site visits. Oh, I'm down to three. We're still playing with this. Okay, so you can see that the San Luis Valley Museum Association has got a lot going on. Actually, I got a pop quiz. How many museums are there in the valley?
Six.
Seventeen!
Seventeen, wow.
Seventeen, all right? And then we also include, as what we call our outdoor museums, the Los Camino Scenic Byway, the Silver Thread Scenic Byway, and the Old Spanish Trail, which the local chapter is in Del Norte. They were actually the founding group, that chapter, for the Old Spanish Trail Association. So, it started here in the valley to develop that as a national. All right, switching hats, tourism. So, I'm now the president. Our conference for 2019 is on February 21st. Hopefully, we'll see a lot of you there. And then we have Chris Castilian, who is the Executive Director for GOCO, who's going to be our speaker. So, I'm really excited about having him here, and I was just reviewing how much money that group has brought to the valley. It's huge. I mean, it's like $4 million per county. Yeah, so we needed to show this guy some love when it comes. We recently were awarded a sponsorship through Colorado Tourism that is going to help offset a lot of our expenses for the conference, so we're really happy about getting that grant. And then we also just got awarded, last week, we got a notification, we got a small matching grant from CTO as well, to help reprint our maps. So, all totaled $14,000-some dollars that we received from Colorado Tourism. Am I five minutes? But we do need to update the map, so if you know some sources that we can go to for the lodging updates or annual events, anything you see that's on that map. We have information centers, so on and so forth. So, I would say we've got people on the board that are reaching out to each area to try and make sure we get that up to date. And then the tourism workshop things that CTO does, you can only have one per region, per fiscal year. So, the one that we're doing for Culture and Heritage will be for their fiscal year of 2018, '19. And then, in the next fiscal year, the Tourism Association will apply for another one of those tourism workshops, which will be Outdoor Adventure Tourism Workshop. There you go. If you have any questions, any ideas, anything you want to send to me about either of those things, you have my card, give me a buzz.
Thank you so very much for providing this helpful information, and I didn't know we had 17 museums in the San Luis Valley, so it looks like I've seen only four of the 17, so I will make it a goal to try to see all 17. And thank you for making it easy by providing this pamphlet.
So, yeah, you've got Sangre de Cristo Heritage Center in San Luis, Fort Garland, Canaías County Museum in Attenito, Jack Dempsey Sanford Museum here, Luther Bean, Ryan Geology, also at Adam State, Swatch, Crestone Historical, Hazard House. I see a picture of the map as I go around. Home Lake, Montavista Historical Society, Transportation of the West, Rio Grande County, Creed Underground, and Creed Historical Society. But then we also have two other museums that have joined us on our neighbor towns in La Vida. Francisco Fort joined us a couple of years ago, and Lake City, Hinsdale County Museum in Lake City joined us a couple of years ago.
Wow, you got a very good memory.
We got it all covered.
Thank you so much, Kat, for everything you do. Appreciate it.
I have some stuff to say.
Oh, yeah, something to say? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Counselor Daniel, and then Counselor Hensley.
Thank you. Kat, thank you so much for sharing this with us. We appreciate it so very much. I was just thinking, and this is probably what Liz was going to say, actually, the marketing board might be a great place to go for the map things, to see who to reach out to for that.
Yes, we've gone for them that, and they actually helped us with funding for this project.
Wonderful, so, yeah, that was what I thought. But thank you so much for sharing these with us, and it's very exciting, so I really appreciate what you're doing.
Counsel Hensley.
I just want to thank you. I know how hard you've been working, and I have to tell you, Kat has done an awesome job as the president. She has worked really hard on all different angles, making sure that these grants are coming through, doing all the hard work for that, and so I just wanted to really reach out and thank you for that. And then the other thing is, it's been about six years, but I don't know if you remember, when I had a marketing research group do a project, and it was really awesome. And we took the group of students to six of the different museums, and they did a research project that I think turned out to be fairly helpful, but it was, that's where I learned a lot about the museum, so they're really good to go to.
Thank you very much. Okay. You can leave them with Heather, thank you. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have a presentation from Early Iron. Feel free to come up to the podium, everyone.
So, we've got a few members in the audience, but that's our interim chair, Greg Gozer. It says racer on his shirt, and that's true. Matt Brandy Beckner, Robert Jackson. You don't recognize him as a sheriff, but for us, he's a whole lot more than that. My wife, Ronnie, and Ms. Helen. But we brought you packets this year to show you what we give out to the riders when they register, what they get for information about our community, and then we threw along some posters, too. But quite seriously, if you know somebody that didn't get one of these posters that would like one, especially on the city crew, those guys in Parks and Rec and other things, just make us a list, and we'll get you more posters for them for their garages. So, this year, we had 557 entries. It's down 27 from what we had last year at 584. We end up folks from Cortland, New York, Springdale, Arkansas, Naperville, Illinois. Ronnie calculated there were seven from Texas, two from Arizona, two from Kansas, one from Utah. So, the 557 entries, 372 were from Colorado. 133 were from New Mexico. 50 to 75 of the entries were first timers, so 10% of the attendees were brand-new to the project and to the community, which is very interesting. Of the 372 from Colorado, 100 were from the valley, 40 of them were actually from Alamosa. The biggest contingent came from Colorado Springs. They sent 53 cars. Pueblo sent 37, Albuquerque 35, Denver sent 22. Canyon City and Santa Fe both sent 15 cars. New stuff this year. Matt and Brandy have gone clear, over the top, about creating a university or academy for pinstripers. They've brought in some internationally-known people who still carry on the trade and have managed to set up a bit of a college or a, I think academy is probably the right way to talk about it because they share data between their folks, but what was the one guy, South Carolina, that drove in?
Alabama.
Alabama. They had folks from all of the United States come to take the class, so there were 22 in that class, three teaching and 19 students. When they got all through half the work they did that they brought to the show, it was auctioned off. We generated $1,526 for our charity this year, and we're going with Woodward Strong. We ended up with more dragsters. The guys on the tractors had all the space they wanted and bragged about how much ice cream they sold. We know there was some 6,000 tacos consumed by some 22 to 2,500 people on Friday night. It's, we've got to figure out a way to be true to you guys with real data, so we've got to figure out some way someday how to count who's actually in the park. Starting next morning with the color guard, thanks again, Charlie. As you guys well know, that everything about our show is run by volunteers. We're a citizen-based initiative, and we started to make a list of who all helped us, and it'd take till morning to get through half the list. But of those participants Friday night, they also consumed 75 gallons of Fadella's Green Chili from the campus. This year, she baked it on-site. There was some rumor about 25 gallons of beer somehow evaporated. Cakes, oh, sorry. What did I say?
That's a difference. You said gallons.
Oh, that's 25 kegs of beer. Let me slow down and take a breath, anyway. Through the process, we end up selling again our 600 banquet tickets, wall-to-wall at Nights at Columbus. Johnny Rodriguez and his group puts together, they're a banquet that people brag about all over. We have so much fun listening to people talk about how the show goes and what it means to them. Sometimes in other communities, Jeff and I went to Las Vegas to the SEMA show, and we'd walk down the aisles with our shirts on, and people come and tap us on the shoulder and say, "We heard about Alamosa, we heard about Early Iron," and they repeat stories to you. The Saturday Night Cruise, thanks to your local law enforcement and everybody else that supports it. We have no way of counting, but if you were down there on Main Street and Sixth Street, it was wall-to-wall, five, six people deep for blocks and blocks and blocks. And I looked and looked, trying to find a frown, and all I could see was people enjoying themselves. But anyway, so this year, we're up to 88 major sponsors. T-shirt Trailer, Matt takes care of all the advertising, all those who make the larger donations get recognition on all of our equipment, and our dash plaques don't have near enough room, but we do have a plaque, or a, what do you call it? A placard? That goes in the window of every car that has the logo of all the local sponsors. So, we try to give people recognition for all the things they do to help us out. Those major sponsors give $500 or more in cash or in kind. We had over 500 cars sponsored. Ronnie calculated $12,776 that came in. A lot of people sponsor more than one car. It's very interesting that local people will seek us out and want to have their name to help sponsor a car, to have it in the park, to help them with some of the expenses. So, we had well over $10,000 in kind. The cost of the event exceeded $100,000 again. We know that 70% of that money went directly into local pockets. We know exactly to which restaurant, to which vendor, it all went. So, we're pretty proud of the economic impact, Liz, and some of this stuff. And I'd still like to work with you on the, between the two models we've done to figure out how to really measure this thing that's appropriate for everybody. Gave away another engine, gave away some transmissions, gave away some money. The sheriff managed to wrangle 58 dozen donuts from all the different riders. And we did serve a few of them, maybe a couple dozen, but he, most people don't know, goes over and donates to the seniors, and they freeze them, and they have donuts for most of the year. So, that one's fun. But our biggest thank you to you guys, the staff, for the permitting, all the things that we go through to get this thing in order. You've made it very easy to get through the process. We love the relationship we have with Parks and Rec and Public Works. Again, law enforcement, top knot, the relationship that they've got with the sheriff and the state patrol, you could not beat. So, at the end of the evening show, we have something called the Good, the Bad, and the Ugly, and we all go through the process to figure out what can we do better. We'd like to invite you, if you don't mind, into three conversations. We'd like to reopen a conversation that started years ago about how we can all work together to put better sound system into that park. You guys took the lead, and you've done some amazing things, and we've never had a tragedy or an issue, but we'd love to think that working with you guys and others, Alma, Saturday or Sundays at 6:00, all the different people that might use the park, Roland Deep, Summerfest, all of them, that we can get back together and figure out a way to generate some income to put a state-of-the-art sound system in there that's a little easier for people to use. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't mind if there was some sort of permanent structures, whether they were waterproof speakers in the trees or whatever. Who knows, you know, where this will all go? But we'd love to talk to you about a sound project. There's one specific request, and we'll help you raise the money for this one. On Second Street, on the entrance from the parking lot, to get into the park, there's about 15-foot of dirt between the asphalt and the running track. We want to help raise the money so we can asphalt that thing. Time those 557 guys pulled in and time they all pulled out Saturday afternoon, there was a pretty good fog right in that spot, and we tried watering it down and stuff. But if you don't mind, that's one we'd like to talk about. And then next year, if you don't mind, we'd like to have a work session with you guys before the show, probably a month or two in advance, and make sure that we're touching all the right bases, that we're getting all the right things done, so that we're the better partner that we can be. So, anyway, our thank you is first to you guys, and then absolutely to all the citizens that make this a tremendous show. We've got folks, obviously, from Alamosa, Monty, and Del Norte, and San Luis, and others, but we've got a lot of valley alumni that come home just to participate in the show. So, it's amazing, the amount of people that show up. And to answer an obvious question, yes, we miss Jeff. How could you not miss Jeff? Jesus. But anyway, through the process, we made Jeff proud. Everybody jumped in and tried to fill in. We had some glitches, and of course, we had glitches when Jeff was there. But anyway, we think we did a pretty good job and have gone through a process to try to figure out how to make the show better and better. So, you guys want to throw something in here? Aw, come on. Helen? Greg?
I just wanted to mention the greatest asset we have is Cole Park, and thank you guys for taking care of it and maintaining it. It's an absolute gem for events like this.
Any questions from you guys? Thoughts?
Can I say something real fast? I think the entrance was brought up last year, and from a staff perspective, we didn't think it was a big deal. I think through some of the changes, maybe we lost track of where. So, you can check that one off your list from a fundraising perspective. We're going to get that taken care of.
Well, thank you.
I think there is just some confusion going on, and it was something we committed to last year. So, you can check that one off your list.
And you're not the first people we've confused, either.
We get confused.
Counsel Brawls, and then Counselor Grego.
Now, I want to thank you for all the efforts you put into it. I know it takes a lot of volunteers, a lot of planning, a lot of organization, but it's great for the community. My wife and I love going around, seeing the cars and everything, and so it's really a great event. So, thank you for your effort.
Counsel Grego.
Yes, it seems like every year you try to outdo yourselves, and you have, and people look forward for this event. It's like a reunion type of deal. And then you talked about pinstriping. I've had firsthand with Matt and Brandy talk about work that they do, and if they put on a school, I bet you it's a first-class school, because the work they do is incredible. So, thank you, guys, all of you. Greg, everybody, thank you very much for what you do for our community and the valley.
Counsel Hensley.
So, I also want to echo and thank you so much for everything you do. It's a class act. It is something that's fantastic. It's putting the valley and Alamosa on the map. I want to thank our staff because they really do an awesome job with Cole Park and all of our parks. But Cole Park gets used a lot, so thank you to the staff for everything you do, for all of the traffic and everything that we do on there, and it does stay looking as a really nice park. So, I want to thank them. Also, as a side note, my husband does small donation for the cars, and I have to tell you, your posters have become something that are really a wanted item, and how many people will call us and say, "Do you have access to a poster and the little pins?" So, those have really become quite collector items as well. So, anyway, but thank you for everything.
So, you just threw out a double-ended compliment that I have to just explain just a hair. We used to send off and have other people do that work. Who do you think designed that poster this year?
Awesome. Counselor Carson.
I just wanted to reiterate what everybody said. Thank you, guys. It's awesome. Every year, we love watching, you know, the crews at night is great, and it's always been just a really fun, safe event. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
And I, too, want to thank you all for having an amazing team that works together to make this event as successful as it is every year, over and over. And I especially like to thank you all because I had one of those 6,000 tacos. And I'm going to tell you, well, actually, I had three of them. They were delicious, along with the green chili. So, thank you for paying attention to the small details, because those small things make a huge difference in events that you put on like this.
So, the green chili wasn't too hot?
You know what? It was a little shocking at first, but...
It was a memory?
It was good. It was delicious.
So, Mayor, did you also put a dent into one of those kegs of beer as well?
No, no, I didn't. I was, I was driving. I don't drink and drive, so...
Among 6,000 people, we couldn't find one witness.
Well, thank you all so very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, all righty. So, up next on the agenda, we have Business Brought Forward by the city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. As chief is making his way up to the front, he can review an opportunity we have to submit an application, and I'll pull up a map.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Here tonight to get authorization to submit an application to the Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control for a Live Burn Facility. The Division has decided with some of the funding that they're getting federally and within the state for fire and fire training to try to establish some regional training facilities, live fire training facilities around the state. The closest one to us is over in Ignacio, so in order for us to do any... So in order for us to do any live fire training, we have to send guys over there. And it's, live fire training is required if we want to have anybody that's certified for it. So if we're doing a Fire One certification or Fire Two, we have to send those guys over to Ignacio for their live fire training. I've got seven guys going over next month at the tune of almost seven thousand dollars by the time we get done, so. The building would be furnished by the state. We have to supply the property and the infrastructure going into it. I did meet with Mark and Ray from Public Works. We've identified some property that is vacant right now, as far as what we feel like would be adequate. Mark is committed that they would help us get the road base laid in and get the site prepped for the concrete work. We know dollars are tight, so we want to accomplish this without coming back to council and asking for any funds for it. And so we would end up signing a memorandum of understanding, an agreement with the state because they would actually own the building. We would actually be the host agency and operate and use the building for training. Would be open for all the departments in the Valley. It'd also be open for any departments outside of the Valley that would want to come in and use that live fire facility. And it also would help us on our ISO ratings. That's one of the questions every time we have an ISO review. They ask, "Do you have live fire training facilities?" And ISO is who sets our fire rating code. Right now, we're a three in the city limits, but that's how you pay your property insurance for your fire insurance. So that's what, those ratings establish the rates that you pay. So the property we're looking at, get Heather's little thing here, is off of the Twentieth Street, back behind what would be the trash, I call it the old trash compactor building, the sanitation building. And then there's the Parks and Rec building. The street department has a lot of debris pile up there that they use, gravel piles and everything. So we're looking at coming down, farther down in here into this vacant ground that is not being used. It would actually be between their piles and then to the south of their piles to the property line by the airport. So it's all vacant ground. There is a fire hydrant approximately in this area that we could bring the water line down and get it somewhat close to that building, so. So that's the property identified, plenty far away from everything. The buildings, can you bring a picture of that up, Heather? The building or the attachment on that? The buildings are either natural or either gas-fired, can be propane or natural gas, or they'll burn wood, basically, as excelsor, which is wood shavings. And so the way they're designed is a three-story, typically a three-story, some of them are two-story. This is an example of what the state's proposing to bring in. So we're able to do live fire training, roof ventilation training. This area would actually be where you could, we would be able to go up and cut holes in the roof. Third-story training, so we would actually be able to lower somebody out of a third-story window. Ladder training, that kind of thing. So it's a multi-use facility, not just live burn facility. NFPA for certifications require us to be able to, when we do live fire training, that we have to do a ground floor, an upper floor live fire, and then a below-ground level live fire extinguishment for the guys for their certification. So this building is set up to where we could have fire in here and all, and the two upper floors also. So it's a pretty nice facility. The state's investment on that part, that building, probably by the time they pay to get it set up, their share of it's probably in the two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. So we would be getting off pretty easy for a live fire training facility if we can get this accomplished. So with that, I'll open it up to some questions, if you have any.
Counselor Greigel and then Counselor Daniel.
My question is, is there any concerns in that close to the airport?
No, there isn't, Charlie. That's clear out of the flight path.
Okay.
It's far enough over to the east of that that there's no concerns in there.
Okay.
So the flight approach kind of comes over the cemetery, and we're probably a couple three-hundred yards at least east of the runway there.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Chief, this is super exciting. So thanks for...
Yeah, it is. It was kind of exciting when they sent the email out that they were soliciting for applications. And I think we'll have a fair shot at it just because there is none in this region as far as close for the Valley. I know there's some, a lot of other parts in the state that don't have access to them, but we've probably got some of the most distance miles to drive other, out in the eastern plains.
So we're paying seven thousand dollars now to the City of Ignacio to send...
Yeah, well, we're, it's actually the Firefighters Academy that's over there, so they're going over by the time I pay for their tuitional fees and their lodging and everything else that has to take place. The guys that's going over there, it's roughly about seven grand. It costs us almost a thousand bucks a person by the time we get done.
So when we look at long-term for this, would some of the revenue become...
Yeah, that cost will come down. So we'll, we'll realize some savings in our training stuff down the road.
Will we realize revenue?
Um, we probably won't realize revenue off of it. But we will realize the training benefits, being able to get our guys back into the certification programs again. And then, of course, if we have other departments come in and use it from outside of the Valley or even outside Alamosa, they might spend some money locally while they're here, so...
But it will be a benefit, while it may not generate funding for the Valley departments to be able to utilize it and not have to travel as far as well, correct?
Correct. Like I say, it's going to help everybody out, so...
And then, how many trainings could we do a year? Like, what are, what we're doing?
Uh, you could run stuff in those things every day. We would probably be doing at least thirty to forty a year, probably, out of it, at least.
This is really exciting. I'm really hoping that the state likes the application.
Yeah, hopefully so. I can say it's, it's quite an investment on their part, and it's quite a facility. I've looked at them for quite a while, trying to figure out how we could come up with some grant funds or something to put in our own facility, and this is a unique opportunity.
Thank you.
Counselor Carson.
So you don't have to come up with any match at all?
No, they did on the application. It does ask if we could come up with a ten percent match to the facility, and their estimates was roughly around fifty thousand bucks, which that equates to a half-million-dollar facility or, so. I am going to say no, that we can't, because we would have to supply the infrastructure and everything, so we're going to have some costs going into that, which we, as a department, are prepared to do the legwork to get that part covered, so we're not asking you folks for money.
But would the fifty thousand be a deal breaker if you couldn't, if they...
That I don't know. My client might be, but I have no idea.
So we'll take a look at that. I do know, though, that we'll be able to count the cost for the infrastructure that we need to put in.
Yeah, the in-kind costs, as far as putting, putting in the pad, putting in the road, that kind of thing, because we are going to have to pour a concrete pad. I'll be approaching the fire district to get, hopefully get their contributions, which I'm sure won't be a problem. And we've got some other sources to help with the concrete, so...
Because it'd be worth the fifty thousand to get the facility in, for sure.
Yeah, it definitely would for us. We'll never be able to come up with that kind of a facility for that kind of money. It's just that I know going into next year, the budget's pretty conservative, so we're going to try to get this done without it, so...
Got you.
Did you say what the nearest other training facilities have?
Right now, the one we've been sending folks to is over in Ignacio. There is one located in Pueblo. Pagosa Springs had one, but they haven't been using it lately. I, the last couple of years, I don't know if they've got some issues with that or not. And it was a gas-fired facility. Somebody told me they thought they might be building one in Trinidad, as far as Trinidad Fire is concerned, but they weren't sure. But those would be the closest facilities to us.
This would do all, all types of fuel?
Uh, this one, you have to pick either wood or gas-fired. If we go gas-fired, then it's simply setting up a propane tank out there. They don't use a lot of fuel, and likewise, when we're extinguishing the fires in the building, probably each time it burns, we're maybe using maybe fifty gallons of water at most. So it's minimal water use and minimal fuel use is the way they're designed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Council? Go ahead, Mike.
I was going to say, I make a motion that we proceed with the application process.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Chief, I just want to thank you for pursuing that application, and I think anytime we have an opportunity to pursue getting tools and equipments to help our firefighters in their daily activities, we sure appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Okay. Start voting, please. Ms. Susana?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so very much. Up next, we have City Manager Legal, the first reading of ordinance number twenty-seven dash twenty-eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance has been a while in the making. There's no timeliness, timeliness issues with respect to it, but every time I go through our code, when I'm trying to insert some new ordinance provisions or do some rewrites on stuff that we have, I am struck by how archaic the code language is, and in particular, its, its use of the old structure of he to mean everybody in the world. So it assumes that the city manager is a he, it assumes that the finance director is a he, it assumes everybody, all the council members are he's. And, you know, certainly the trend of modern English language usage is to use more inclusive pronouns. So I set Desiree Cortez to the task of finding all the instances in our code where that was the case, and we have done that. And then in, in reading through all of those changes to try to make them flow smoothly, because I don't like chunky constructions like he or she, where we can avoid them. You know, the best way is to make a smoothly flowing use of language that's gender-neutral. In doing that, I just, I came across seven specific instances that are listed in your background there of code provisions that also need to be changed, having nothing to do with the gender-inclusive language. But since we're going through the code, it made sense to address those. And the first was a definition of indecent exposure that could be construed to prohibit breastfeeding, which for the last, I think it's been five or 10 years, the state statute has recognized the right of a woman to breastfeed anywhere. Secondly, the code assigns record-keeping duties to the municipal judge that the municipal judge just does not do. The clerk does those. Third, it assigns water tap permit issuances and record-keeping to the municipal clerk, and the clerk doesn't do those either. The Public Works Department does those. Fourth, it appoints, or it has the potential for appointment of deputy city clerks by the city council rather than by the city clerk. And we have in the past done a resolution for council that authorizes the clerk to appoint deputy clerks, but just allow the clerk to do it in the ordinance makes more sense. Fifth, the issuance of transient dealer's licenses by the city clerk. Really, if you notice this, the structure of the old ordinances was the city clerk did everything by way of record-keeping. And the city has grown since nineteen sixty-four, and so the departments now do their own record-keeping. That one's done in finance. We have some archaic, not archaic, we have some language for the disposition of proceeds of the sales of abandoned motor vehicles. I don't think this occurs very often, but we have language straight out of the statute whereby we remit those proceeds to the State Department of Revenue. We don't have to do that, so we're going to remit them to our own general fund, is the suggested change. And then the definition of person for licensing contractors need to be updated because it did not contemplate licenses being issued to corporate entities, and we do that all the time. So those are the seven substantive changes to go with the hundreds of changes that change around that gender-specific language.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I have to say thank you so much. I asked about the gender-inclusive language before I ran for office the first time and was highly, you know, stressed out by that in the code. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know this was not easy, and I know the work was hard. And I really appreciate taking this into account as a city and really looking at these things that also just make more sense for us. But really, the inclusive language means a lot to me personally, and I think a lot to many members of our community, that we just weren't recognizing in our ordinances as, as we should. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve upon first reading ordinance number twenty-seven dash twenty-eighteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
You want to set it for a public hearing?
Yeah. And set it for a public hearing?
And set it for a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Susana?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public hearing on that will be at your next meeting on October third at seven P.M.
Okay, thank you. Up next is Item B, Resolution Number fifteen dash twenty-eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that the Colorado Municipal League has been following closely and has provided a majority of the information related to this item that will be going before voters. The Colorado Municipal League, and then from reading the information that we've reviewed, staff is concerned as well about the potential that this amendment could have in regards to its impact on us as a municipality. I think in summary, and I'll back up to maybe some of the details, the crux of the issue with Amendment Seventy-four is it doesn't define well enough what the fair market value and what a reduction is. And from further reading the materials, that's somewhat what the intent of it was. Reading the material sent from those agencies that are in support of Amendment Seventy-four, they indicated they could have put more definitive language in the ballot, but they intentionally did not because they wanted to let the courts decide that, which is then one of the crux issues that the Colorado Municipal League has and from a municipality we, we would have as well, and that, you know, the argument for it is that right now, so much of the property has to be, property value has to be taken away. This allows for someone to even have a five, a five, ten percent reduction to have a claim. And so that's, that's fairly scary to, to think that when we are making decisions and someone may want to make the argument that we are reducing their value, it's not defined. It hasn't gone through the court system, and it would be fairly costly for us to have a, you know, a defense for that and to prove it, and it would take a lot of time, and it would definitely chill the actions that, that city council may take. Also, trying to define what fair market value and, and those types of things are. In your background, essentially, what we did since the Colorado Municipal League has spent a significant amount of time working with other city attorneys, city managers, other communities in regards to what these concerns are, is we pretty much copied from that material to place it directly what's in your background information. The other part that recommends, that comes out through this is that already our constituents have a right to seek compensation from state or local. So it's not as if this right does not exist, and it's a well-established that's been put through the test. And then that way, you don't get as many frivolous lawsuits because it has been tested to determine the definition of some of those key language areas. Some of the concerns is that not only could municipal action result in a lawsuit, but potential inaction. The obligation to compensate is triggered without regard to how long someone has owned the property or what the intentions or the actions of the property owner are. There's no exceptions for health, safety, and general welfare regulations or those actions needed mandated by the federal or state government. And then the concern is, once it's passed, there is no flexibility. And so here's where the lack of definition comes in. The General Assembly cannot implement definitions or measures. It's going to have to occur through the Supreme Court, and that's where the costs and the fear come in related to this item. Colorado Municipal League has also made points in regards to who might be funding this and pushing for it and those types of things. In regards to whether or not we should support it, you can decide how much weight you want to put on that, but I do know it's made them very concerned because there's significant revenue behind it, whereas there's not much revenue behind trying to get information out on the consequence. out on the consequences of Seventy-four. So I do know that they're worried about the disbalance, the unbalance that's in that message that is going out, um, and so based on, on council discussion tonight, if there is support for passing this resolution, we would also recommend, um, doing non-monetary education, um, for the public because we are still limited from the fair campaigns practices, so we would make sure we're following that, but if this is a resolution that council passes, we would make sure to do appropriate education that falls within those regulations.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, Counselor Greigel?
With that, I'll make the motion that we pass resolution number fifteen, two thousand eighteen, opposing Amendment Seventy-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Susanna?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, staff. Okay, we, um, have already covered our committee reports and staff announcements. Counsel, uh, do you have any, um, other comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to recognize we have a boy scout here tonight, working on his citizenship in the community, merit badge, so welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to have you here.
And thank you for that. Okay? If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.